Okay. We'll do, start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call. Looks like Mayor Highsmith and Councilman Nordean are on Zoom. What's that? Councilman Whitner and Councilwoman Hardik, all are present. Uh. We do have a quorum. Anybody who cares to join me in our opening prayer? Heavenly Father, please influence our hearts and our minds as we do our best to serve the community tonight in making these decisions. Please help civility prevail in our community. In your name, amen. Uh, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
What's that?
Second, been moved by Councilwoman Hardik, second by Councilman Whitner. The agenda, any discussion, discussion? All in favor, uh, right hand?
Aye.
Or say aye, whatever. Used to run another meeting, my apologies. Say aye, that's, I oppose, alright, approved. Communications from citizens. We got you guys under thirteen, under building permits, so. Anything else online? Okay, consent to agenda for the minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Discussion, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Uh, bills, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five to June tenth, twenty twenty five. Has everybody had a chance to review those? Do they need a moment?
I can view them, um.
What? Okay, you're making a motion, okay, I have a motion to approve the bills from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five through June tenth of twenty twenty five. Second, moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes. I'm guessing the travel reimbursement was prior to the policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha.
There was two that's prior and then there's two.
That's what I was wondering.
Oh, it's in the packet, I think. Is that, are these two on the last page of what Christopher scanned?
They are, but this, I mean, this for this one, this one is for this, okay, so that's.
These are up for approval, they need to be approved.
And that is with the policy. So there are the two with the policy and there's two with prior.
Correct. So these two right here that are at the end of your bills or end of your packet that was scanned.
Okay.
They need to go through your approval. So I can cut the check. Right there.
Page fifty nine.
Fifty nine sixteen? I, I don't have no more question, I just was making sure that that was prior to the policy put in effect at last meeting.
Yeah, the, the one, the check that was written was prior, these two were not.
Perfect, thank you for clearing.
And that was on May twenty ninth.
Yeah, May twenty ninth and June fourth.
So those are the two for them. That were with policy in place.
Yes.
And then there was two on the bills that show without policy in place.
Right. That are, right, I saw those.
Yeah, those were the, those were.
I did not see the two at the very end.
Yep. Sorry, those got out of order in packet.
Yeah, what, we got ACFUC banking, don't we have that bank here? Land City?
Joel, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Tammy has a question.
What's the question?
Atlantic City Credit, I mean Banking, how come we paid to go to town when we have one in Shoshone?
Uh, I was in Lander, the primary reason in Lander was the meeting with HDR. While I was there, I also stopped in with BLM at the shooting range in Atlantic City Federal Credit Union to meet with the president of Atlantic City Federal Credit Union. Uh, he reciprocated by coming to Shoshone the next week to discuss, uh, banking, uh, because in July, uh, town of Shoshone and other municipalities across the state of Wyoming will be able to deposit in federal credit unions where we have never been able to do that in the past.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so Brian came over and met with Kim and Chris and myself and, uh, and, and Shoshone, but, uh, that was, that was a purpose. So I did three things while I was there.
Thank you.
Cast of them. I guess, uh, my question. Since these are bills and they are in our packet, do we want to, the vouchers, we, do we need, that's not on the agenda, but it's a bill.
Future, we need to separate those.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
We should maybe list them separate, but, uh, maybe if we vote on the, I suggest that we vote on the bills and then we go with the vouchers as a second motion at this time, because they are bills for this time.
Right.
But keeping them separate since they were, okay.
Going forward as a subsection C per se in the, in this instance.
Yeah, something like that. Alright, so on the bills that have already, uh, we're voting on the bills on the first section and has been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, so on the travel vouchers, which are also bills for this month. Uh, one trip for the, uh, Wyoming Cardinal Cardio Pulmonary, working on that. And the trip to Lander with HDR and all that business that we just spoke about, could I get a motion to approve those?
Make a motion to approve the travel vouchers.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any, is there any discussion? I, I think this is nice, it, it's a lot more transparent.
Yeah.
On, gives, and it also gives, you know, the mayor a great chance to, like he said, always meeting with the president or the bank meeting with it, to explain things for a little better transparency. Uh, all those in favor, uh, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Was that an opposed or a delayed in favor of? I think it was a delay. Okay, I'll just say unanimously. Public hearing non-ordinances, Town of Shoshone Fiscal Year Twenty Six Budget Second Reading.
But no reason.
Another thirties. There you go, thirty nine. Word is this year, twenty six second reading as previously read into the record.
And we have no changes from the last reading.
Uh, that'd be discussion.
What?
That'd be discussion.
At, no, I'm saying it's been presented with no changes at this point.
Correct.
That I didn't see, sorry. So can I get a motion to approve?
Oh, the motion, go through.
Second.
I don't know who got on that, we'll let the clerk figure that. Well, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the Town of Shoshone Fiscal Year Twenty Six Budget Second Reading, now it's for discussion.
Yes, I think we need to amend this.
Well, we got, first we got two budget amendments that were presented to the clerk for consideration. Amendment number one, page fifty one in your package. Uh, this one was, that's what, um, the mayor, talking with me, he asked about, you know, why we didn't have a part-time officer in the budget. And I said, well, we have, you know, our four patrol officers and they have the SRO, allegedly can fill in the summertime. Uh, his concern was, you know, vacations, people being gone for whatever reason, then, then it falls on me that after, you know, work seventy hours a week, so he suggested that if available to look at having a partial part-time availability in the budget, so that's what was the, uh, factor for this first budget amendment. Uh, so it'd be for forty-five hundred dollars total in wages, which we average about ten hours per week. So that would fill in during the summertime and if someone's on vacation or have that availability, they're not benefited, so it's just strictly wages. Uh, no modifications were made to the revenue side as this would be a position, part-time, just filling in for officer leaving, so it's not in addition to, it's not that drop, it's just for filling. Um, so cost of the budget would be five thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars, six and six cents.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tam.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, sir.
I would, yeah, I brought this up to Chris, uh, my, my concerns, uh, is, uh, he, he has to fill in on these and sometimes the other, he has other tasks to do, it makes it hard for him to do that. Uh, he, he does a lot of it and other things, uh, uh, between economic development and running the PD and everything else. I, I just fail to provide the town with, with good coverage and especially these summer months where they're so busy. But this is something we've, we've done in the past and I believe we still should continue to do this to help, you know, uh, provide coverage for our citizens of Town of Shoshone and, uh, and not run our chief of police plum into the dirt. I, I just believe this is something that we should, we should have proven. And, uh, this is sorta, we'll see how this works, uh. If it doesn't look like it's working, we don't have to spend all the money, we don't have to do all of it, uh. I don't know, but from in, in the past, so this has worked well for us when we've done this.
It looks like there's room. So, in the budget to add that.
Prior to this, uh, there was fifty, I don't remember how much, fifteen, six thousand to fifty-eight thousand in unallocated revenues that hadn't been allocated as expenditures for doing zero balance based budget. Um. If you scroll up, I believe the budget numbers. On this, assume that the two budget recommendations are approved as, just to give you a, a score of what it looked like. Um, it would leave thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five, uh, the general fund money is unallocated versus expenditures.
How much is that? Next. Thirty, thirty eight?
Thirty-eight, seven twenty-five, that's after both of the.
If both.
Let's give you a score of what it would be if. They're both.
That's what both the amendments.
I'd entertain a motion to amend the budget as just presented.
I make the motion.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the budget as presented, budget amendment number one. Uh, any further discussion?
Think we. Sorry, I'm sorry. You can catch that, we'll read to the next one.
Yeah, any other discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Amendment number two.
Number two, I apologize, apparently it starts to put it in the background, there was fifty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars of unallocated money from revenues currently after the first reading, it's in the background, it's like, can't read by it. Anyway, so budget amendment two is, so we have a, um, currently I have an employee who is looking at retiring sometime in the near future, um, and the budget is not technically accounted, I'm having a personnel brought in prior to retirement to have a chance to train, um, for replacement of that person. After talking with the mayor, um, he felt that it would be more prudent to hire, um, as a temporary hire in the training process and not have them benefited at a temporary status until the position comes fully open, at which time if they are a good fit and they, it works out, then they would move into the benefited position. So it would be forty hours a week, it would be at the rate of wages, wages only, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't, so it'd be like a, two months worth, so sixty days temporary employee status and then provided that they are able to do the job, they work out, et cetera, then they could be, then they would be offered the full-time position that, which is benefit after the retirement takes place. We're not having two fully benefited people in one position at the same time, we're not carrying that full cost, just the wages. Um, the total cost would be eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-nine cents, that would be for two months of, um, training. The downside is if we don't do anything and the person would retire, there's currently only one other person that can do all, the components of that job, but that's me. Um, there's two other personnel that can do parts of it, um, absorb some of it, but, um, we don't have that position is responsible for about five hundred thousand dollars a year of financial tracking and, and everything else, so it's a pretty important position to have somebody have training in it before we just dump that position and then have to try and hire somebody with nobody to train really, that's, that's kind of pretty, just why this is being presented.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tam.
Ton of sense, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, as Chris said, and it's, it's really, you know, we should, as our responsible citizens, we should try, we have, uh, workforce meeting, I went to, uh, last fall, this was a top, one of the topics and we discussed, Shoshone where we have considerably, you know, quite a bit of our staff over sixty years old, uh, but it's, it, this is happening statewide all over, but whether we're business or, or municipalities like us, we should, if we can, try to plan for the future and, uh, and do something like this, uh, that guys, you know, told that maybe I'm not doing my job if I'm not planning what we're talking about right now. It should be our duty to try to bring somebody in like this. And, uh, which already knew, but it was a good reminder, so, is planning for the future. Uh, is, so it's, I think, relative, relatively important to try to, to, to do that while we got a chance. Uh, where we have some warning to try to, uh, try to make the transition a lot easier.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number two as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve budget amendment number two, is there a discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Budget amendment number two passes. Are there any further amendments that need to?
Yes, I think we need to make an amendment on the ten thousand dollar bonus we talked about after we adjusted um, salary increase from the five and a half percent for employees, three and a half. Uh, we talked, we recall that, we talked about dropping that and then doing a ten thousand dollar bonus rather than, um, adhering and being locked in for years to come depending on revenues. See that, so we need to make that amendment of the ten thousand dollar bonus for the employees in town.
Make that motion one thousand pass up? And that was another, no?
And that was the two percent, was that, I, I'm.
Remember we were gonna do five point five.
Five half, or do you like, three?
And we drop it to three and a half with a bonus.
With the bonus of, of.
The ten thousands base for all employees. Not individually, it's a ten thousand dollar pot.
Overall.
Based off of.
So essentially, what is there, ten employees?
Twelve.
Twelve, so that ten thousand we broke and held.
Eleven, because the SRO doesn't technically count, because the school reimburses them, so you wouldn't get it, unless the school offered it.
So there's eleven for the ten thousand, so I mean, everyone's gonna get basically, eat something like.
Close to a thousand.
Yeah.
Minus taxes.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we adjust the budget for the three and a half percent.
Who's, who seconded?
In, he motioned, he motioned.
Yeah, Tammy motioned.
You motioned.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Moved and sec, you're right, okay, I was trying to clarify before.
That's okay.
To the second, so it's been moved and seconded that we amend the budgets to reflect that the wages from last year will show a three and a half percent increase, set aside ten thousand dollars for calendar year and bonuses. Is that correct?
The Ralonic calendar in year, calendar.
Usually do, last one, the time we did it was Christmas, yeah.
Well, that, I didn't know how to say that without making it a religious thing, right?
It's called Christmas, isn't it?
Mid, all right, for a mid-December bonus, how's that?
There you go, okay.
From December bonus, I didn't want to offend anybody.
You're only offending the, uh, Jehovah's.
Right, is it? Is there any discussion on that?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tam.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Uh, I, I really do not believe the town can afford that bonus. Uh, I would rather prefer to look at to see how the year progresses and we could make an adjustment if the town's in the position to put a bonus out later in the year, but I really do not see where we're in the, the position to do that. I think stretching to three and a half is a big stretch for us in any event. I, that's my, looking at the books, I don't see, and we're not through wrangling this thing, but I would think we could leave, maybe have an option to see what we look like in the fall, but I just don't see where we can a, afford to pay that bonus.
Where would that roughly put us on available? Near thirty thousand.
Thirty eight.
Mayor Pro Tam?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We're, we're still reviewing our, our, our budget items, uh, but I, I, at this time, I could not support that and I don't believe that the town should ink that in. There again, I think if we look at it in the fall, uh, or even maybe, I don't know, I, I, I can't support that at this time.
What's this at twenty seven, five? With a surplus option.
We still, Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tam?
Close bid.
The one?
And the closed bid.
I ask, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we have several other projects we could be looking at, one is fencing for the airport. Uh, i- is one of the things, I know we, we have, 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 that could be coming up, uh, and there's a few other items that we're working on that could, could possibly need, needs, need some funding, that's relatively important, but, uh, I just, at, at this time, I just do not see where, like I said, I can't support that, but there's.
Uncalled vote.
Uh, vote's been called, if there's no other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I did not catch Councilman Nordean's vote on that.
My, my vote is to, as long as we can talk about it in the future, I'm fine putting it off for now. But I, I said, it definitely has to be on the agenda, so I voted with the mayor on this one.
Okay.
For now.
Created to.
For now. But again, that's contingent on, yeah, it's for now, contingent on, but look, looking at it in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I would have voted, that's so.
Well, the amendment does pass and I, so, uh, and we're still on discussion on the overall agenda, I don't know if we need to discuss having a, don't hate me, workshop on this. One more final before next meeting, so we don't have, I don't know.
Just, I guess what? Other than just going over, we already got over what to be over.
That's it. I guess we're still reviewing numbers and projects, I'm, I'm just throwing out there, I don't have the authority to call one anyways. It might be more.
Regarding the fencing issue, we talked about my cabin, running some money left in his budget to help with that at one point in the budget workshop.
Go catch some fence poles outside of, other side of town.
Expended pretty quickly.
Yeah, you got to the end of June.
Yeah.
Remember the equipment too, we could use that equipment to put it in, yeah.
Yeah.
They seem like decent guys, they're out of Newcastle. If there's no other discussion on the fiscal, Town of Shoshone Fiscal Year Twenty Six Budget Second Reading, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, building permits. Uh, Mr. Paravoy, so there's been some a lot of, lot going on, a lot of talk and there's been where this is going on and that's going on, and I know that you did get, uh, permitted for the stick-built small house there, but since then, uh, per discussion, you were looking at doing a skid structure, the same size, same place, built by the, the Amish guys. Uh, per discussion, you were looking at doing a skid structure, the same size, same place, built by the, the Amish guys. And upon research, according to. Uh, that town ordinance that the pre-skid structures, prefabricated structure which is built on skids. Hold on a flatbed, they can be used for storage. And all that, but it can be used as a temporary dwelling, but not a long-term dwelling. A modular home is basically the same exact thing, but it's not, does not have skids on it. And so.
You can come up.
Oh yeah, please, and so. If. It is my personal opinion that if the skids were modified to the point where they are not skids. Or removed or somehow changed so that it's, and it's properly. Secured to a foundation, it is no longer in my, I'm not a legal expert, but in my under- my way of thinking, that would not be a skid structure. If the skids are modified, it's permanently fixed.
Hey, I see someone.
Yes, please.
With my. Looking things up today. Uh, there's two things that's gotta be done to it to call it a. Modular.
Okay.
Uh, un- unfinished modular, not just, you know, don't come in with everything, and that is you gotta modify. The rafters a little bit, you've got to put another board into them that's missing, and you have got to. Take on the foundation and the seal plate and fix that a little bit. Uh, and that puts it up to any code or the state code, and that is what your code's based on. And that's what we planned on for a foundation, it's the state code completely.
Are you doing it where you have that like dug in the ground right there?
The what? Where, where the dirt, where it's dug, yes.
I just drove by there today, that's why I noticed that.
And I went by last night to kind of see what else going on as well, and that way.
So, like I said, and what I've asked, gonna ask. Right now is that I can bring it home to make the modifications, so I don't have to go out there and make the modifications and then bring it in. I mean, that's traveling, I don't know exactly how far it is, it seems like long ways. Uh, and for about three days is what it's gonna take me to modify it to make it up to code.
So I, in my thinking about this, what I thought may be an appropriate. Uh, avenue is if we had a motion to modify your building permit to allow for a modular.
It's my understanding the prior building permit is Noel Boyd. He's got a new building permit.
Yeah. He's gonna fill it.
And in that building permit, I think based off of our other experiences, we probably just need some pictures. I don't see when there's an issue with any. Adjustments that you're making to the building um, to make it permanent, we just need to know what you're putting there. I mean, we can say I'm putting this there, right, but in reality, then you bring something there that's an eyesore to our community.
Well, I'm gonna live in it just as long as I can.
Absolutely.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be.
Understand that, but you know, I mean, we've, we've had other things moved in town and, and we've been raked over the coals, so you have to understand we're a little.
Alright, that's fair.
And uh, so, I think that if you could just, you know, whatever that design is uh, with the Mennonites. If they can put you something together, so we know. What we're, what we're, what you're putting there, right? That's what you just said, the Mennonites or who's building this?
I think so.
Yeah, the Mennonites, yeah, that's true, that too, I've been looking into, that's.
We just need to know what it, what's gonna be put there, but you know what I mean?
They have a. Well, just pictures will work, I mean, like I say, it's gonna fit the state, it's gonna fit all the state's codes, anytime anybody wants to come look onto it or. Have anybody, I just do need to modify it, but uh, and I'd like the permission to bring it home first. To modi- for the modifications. And that's.
And I don't, I don't see no issues, and I just think everybody's wanting to know what's gonna be placed.
Yeah. Personally, I'm not too worried about it, cause everything I've seen them build is.
Yeah. If it's Amish.
I mean.
Yes, they're kind of a little different.
Hi, yeah, close enough.
They do, they do.
Yeah.
And the night's got all the modern stuff, the Amish.
Oh, that's the older stuff.
Do you have the current building permit finished?
No, she just, I just, I did not know whether I had to get one. And I, this is given to me tonight.
Turn on Marshall's on, too, I, I didn't know if we could. Modify the approved permit. To allow for the modular, everything's the same except for it's a modular instead of a stick bill.
Yeah, I, I think you can do it either way, you can either modify or just say the old ones Nolan Boyd and. And, and vote on this one. Um.
Don't we also have to? Don't we also have to say that the old one is Nolan Boyd and vote on that too? I would think we would.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, like I'm saying, you can vote to modify the old one. Or you can say, or vote to pull, yank the old one and approve this one.
Personally, I'd like to get rid of the old one with the vote and then start with, start anew with a, a new permit that. We all understand and where it's at, and also on that permit, I'd, I'd also like to see a timeframe. You know, that we're talking about, and if you can't meet the timeframe, then come back into the council and we can go through the process again. But I'd like to see a timeframe on the permit.
Well, we're doing it, we're doing all of it ourselves, I mean, what do you need a timeframe on? Uh.
Projects.
We all work ourselves, so.
Well, that's fine, you know, so may, I think a reason. We've had other, we've had another, well, we've had a trailer that moved in and they're still waiting to. They still haven't completed the skirting, which they're supposed to be able to do, and they haven't done that yet, so, you know, they had no deadline. Because it wasn't a part of the permit that we approved, so.
I think there is a.
There is.
There is a timeline on skirting a trailer. But they haven't. That is offhand, but there it is, thirty days, they have thirty days.
Yep.
Yeah.
They didn't.
My, my, that's my little.
That would be a legal deal. Why don't you talk about this process? We've been raked over the coals in the last couple of years about the building permits here.
Yep.
Well, I think uh, Mister Paravoy's. Uh, deal two is. He's like, do I, can he proceed? Can he move forward? Cause there's a lot of moving deals and it's, it's setback after setback, of course, the concrete's gonna have to set up for. Like, couple of weeks anyways, I'm not a concrete man, a week.
Seventy-two hours.
Before you put a house on it?
Well, that monoslab, I mean, you're only what, eighteen inches deep on your mono, you're pouring monoslam, correct?
Uh-huh, you're using words I have no idea what was. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna teleport base and we're gonna do it.
And then we also looked at a slab either way.
So a monoslab. Is you dig an edge down, like you have. And you pour a thickened edge, the lag bolt in per se, that's what a monolithic slab is.
Okay, well that.
Regular slab is just. And then your footer wall is, you go eighteen inches down, but you come up. How many ever inches, I don't know what it is, state code per se, but you come up and then you build from that up. And that's what you see in most garages per se, is they're, they have that concrete stick up. X amount of inches.
But we're not gonna do a slab, we're gonna do.
It sounds to me, and what I see driving by, like a monolithic slab with your footer, with your edge being down.
It's just a, it's your normal foundations.
And so. Yeah, your term's gonna be a monolithic. And so, yeah, I think. I don't see no issue, I just think Mark's on to something with. The timeframe of what your expected finish date is.
Well, actually, I wanna finish before cold weather, I wanna be into it, I don't wanna stay in that trailer, I wanna get rid of it.
Tell you from firsthand experience, that ain't the way to go.
And the way this works is if you're not finished, it's not like you're in the crosshairs.
Well, that's the deal about getting the pre-made modular, it'll be finished before the weather snaps, at least exterior wise.
One of the reasons we decided maybe we should go that way.
Speed things up. If you said it.
We didn't even get started last year because everybody had us shut down until. It was almost September before they got the electricity in, so.
If you said it and you're not finished with your, your modifications to the inside, you said about the rafters, et cetera. But to check off the base, and you just come in and say, look, I need a little bit more time and you give it a little bit more.
Okay, well, modifications we gotta do first, and that'll be the first thing on our, we'll do that, but we'll do that while we're.
Can you come up and say your name, please?
I'm Drew Paravoy, I'm his son, also his neighbor. Um, looking at this with the prefab, the exterior, which is what most people would be concerned about. Should be done pretty much immediately, as soon as the concrete's done, as soon as it's set in, obviously exterior is one of the first things that we're gonna work on. So then the exterior would be buttoned up, looking nice and not sitting. Like the trailer house, not just sitting there, so that should be buttoned up and weatherproof, one of the first things. Then after that, the interior, I mean, we can kind of go at our own pace because.
It looks nice from.
Yeah, because nobody can really see, we can move things in and out, just making sure that it doesn't look like a dump site. Like, you know, we cleaned up all that concrete and everything, or had Danny do it before he left and took down all those trees. So the goal is to make the whole lot and everything else look nicer and just be better for everybody in the area. So I, I don't know the best way to get it approved.
So you need to make a motion to.
Need to make a motion to avoid the last building, that's the first step. I made a motion to avoid the last building permit, permit by Vance Paragoy at two oh four West Six.
Been moved and seconded that we avoid out the. Existing building permit, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Sorry, I jumped the gun there, there's a delay. All those opposed? Approved. Alright, so how are we gonna get this new one approved? Uh, would it be legal to? Go on to the signage and come back to this building permit in ten minutes?
Marshall?
I don't know why we couldn't, it might be a little out of order of our permit to, if we went from thirteen to fourteen, back to thirteen.
While he fills out the building permit?
Yeah, you could do that. This Paraguay, I have a pen here, oh, give me Scott one.
Got him covered.
Alright, we're gonna move on to unfinished business, and then we'll just find yourself somewhere comfortable and. Do what you gotta do and we'll come back to it yet this evening. Signage on the south elevation.
So on this one, they sent on the, hold on, let me get to it. Um, they sent three different looks. So that's gonna be on, starting. On page three. And then page four and page five. Of the. Okay. Of the DaVinci.
Here on the screen.
Keep scrolling. Keep scrolling. Okay, that's the first look.
And that's the back.
So that's the um, facing. Thermal.
Right, right here.
Yeah. Facing thermal, so it would be the logo at the top and then a line that says. Town of, and then below that Shoshone, that's the first look.
North, correct. North elevation then.
That's what you and I say.
Because.
The engineers call it the south, cause they're facing south when they look at the building.
Okay, alright, we're all, now we're all sticking to the same hymn. The south facing sign from the north.
Yes, correct.
To the north, got you, okay.
So that's the first one, then the second one is the logo to the left. And then town of, and then under that Shoshone. Then the third look is the logo and then the full town of Shoshone. Underneath it. So that's what he needs you guys to decide, which one do you want?
Not that I have a vote, but.
I got similar.
I think the second one just looks too high up on the building, and then when you're bringing town of Shoshone. Down below the logo. It looks better. No, it looks too high.
I like the second one.
I do too.
Is that a motion? Sorry, Ken.
No. No. She's gonna mess up our checks.
And I just like the way the logo is off to the side, I don't know, I just think it looks modern.
I agree.
It just gives so much space. Fake building.
I'm not trying to take a, a age shire. You better be careful.
I'm not gonna sit next to you.
I like the second one.
I do too, and I'll make the motion for the second one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will move forward with the. Second logo design, is there any discussion?
Well, which one is the second one again?
This one right here on your screen right now.
What's the third one? I, I prefer the second one. I mean, the third one, I prefer the third one, one on the bottom, I prefer the third one, a. It's a little lower, closer to eyesight level when you're driving in, and it's wider, more visible. That's, that's my uneducated opinion, I prefer the third one.
Reason I don't like that one, to be honest with you, is because there's security cameras right there in the middle of it, and it actually obscures. Part of the viewpoint of the camera. You can't really see it very well, but it's right.
Oh, there's a camera there? Oh, that makes a huge difference.
The second one.
Puts it above the security.
Above the security camera.
Yep, that's the only one that is.
Correct.
Can we move the camera?
At a cost.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, this, the third one is just more visible if you're driving up to it, it seemed to me, I don't know. That, that, that's my only opinion, the second one looks pretty good too, but I, I think it's just too high. But maybe we need to be high to avoid the camera.
Well, just because it's high, if that's the layout, can we look at adjusting the height? I mean, we're just picking the layout, I didn't know we were picking how high up it is.
Well, they put it that high to avoid the camera, that's why it's that high.
Got you.
Cause the camera on this one is right there. But the cam- it's, it's a fisheye camera, so it's a single camera that is one hundred and eighty degrees.
Put it right in the O. How about that, Joel, we put the camera right in the O of Shoshone. Or town, we drop it.
Or town, yeah, on the, we could do that if we did that, maybe on the third one. We'd make that work, I don't know. Of, near the of, or where are we at with that camera?
No, it's not gonna work.
I was thinking the, I was still thinking the second one, but.
So it seems to me, I, I know it'd be an extra expense, but it seems silly to me that a camera is really defining where we put the uh, the sign.
The reason, what I was saying about the cameras, it has to be there, because it's a fisheye, hundred and eighty degrees left and right. If we move it to the left or move it to the right, it no longer is able to.
The coverage.
Yeah, it's a fisheye, it's one camera that is a hundred and eighty degrees.
But did you see that little small writing? Says on each one of them, it says, place letter set to avoid existing CCTV camera. I didn't see, notice that before. On each of them.
That's why it's probably up.
But each of them says that.
Well, and that's why I'm saying on, on the, you know, the first one is the same as the second one, the only difference is. The logo's at the top rather.
Yep.
So why, why couldn't we move the logo on the first one to the side, so it's at the left? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Chris, on the first.
On the second one.
Go to the first design. So, so that brings it down, see, see the camera right there above the O? So my thought process is take the circular town logo.
Put it to.
And move that to the left like it is in the second. But see how that brings the wortage down, so it's not so high?
Yeah, that's my point, cause I think it's too high on that other one.
Can I, can I mark on this?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
This is the one we're talking about, right?
Uh, yep.
So.
Yeah, oh, I know what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, having that, the letters directly below the camera affect the camera.
Depends how far they stick out. This is kind of, just to put it.
You're saying second one, but lower.
It could look like to the door, stuff like that. Camera's steer that.
Right.
Close to the building viewpoint, if it sticks out, cuz the camera's against the, it sticks out like three inches. That's cam, so we just move this to there.
So what does that mean, when he's saying on here, place letter set to avoid existing? He's specifically notating that on each one of them.
I said, it depends how far they stick out. Camera literally is a fisheye, hundred eighty, hundred eighty, okay? So it doesn't go backwards in time, but it goes straight down and out. So if the camera lens is here and the lettering sticks out here, you see what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It would obscure up against the building.
And can we move the camera?
It's almost below it.
Or is that a big deal?
It says it's three inches.
So in a number, I don't know how far, that's not a concern. In version two, the camera is below, is below the lettering.
Right.
But we just moved the town logo.
But I mean, I can go right to their donors. See, here's what the camera we're talking about, I have one of my stores.
Oh, I get it. But it's.
Well, I don't think we can actually know. Here, it's only point one eight seven inches thick. So the lettering's not gonna interrupt the camera, so it won't matter.
Well, since it's three, I thought I read that it was three inches from the wall.
It looks like they're running a, a little board to mount it to. Okay, so we'll stick out then. Oh, I see, yeah, the brace way mounting. So at that point, the only option is for it to be below. So then we have to go number two.
Or is it five inches? It's five inches from the wall.
So we have to go below, like that one in version two.
Unless I'm reading that wrong.
My problem with version two is it looks crowded. And so, and from a visual standpoint.
It does with the top.
Yeah.
My only thing, Mark, is I'm saying to bring that down like version one, but we moved that logo, the circular logo and ver, so think of version one. We moved the circular logo over to the left of that. Rather than it be on the top, we move it over to the left. So it's like version two, but it puts the letters in the eyesight that Joel was talking about.
What do you think about stretching out the town of Shoshone? The wording. Actually, if you're doing the way, with what you're talking about, Jordan, it, that wouldn't work because you're moving the logo to the left. I get that, so.
The third one isn't bad. I don't, I don't think it was bad.
I kinda, you know. Don't like the circle that far from the roof personally, but I guess I don't. It's not right. Right, let him know here.
It, it look. I keep saying this, it looks crowded to me, you know, the, you know, with the lettering stacked up, you know, on top of each other.
I'm gonna display it. Oh, okay.
And so.
Now, are the letters above or below the camera?
That's above it. The letters are below.
No.
No, that, yeah, the letters are below the camera.
The camera's right.
In between the logo and the wor, the letters. You can't see it, there you go.
I think if we put anything below the camera into the sides of it, we'd have to bring the camera out five inches, the same amount.
Three ain't gonna work. The only thing that works is, is stick out.
Well, if I'm reading it right, five inches from the wall surface.
Trying to see where it shows that, where is that? I, I'm looking.
Actually, well, look, look at the top. Top to the right there. Town of Shoshone to the right. Go up, go up, Chris, or down, that's fine. Go up, other way. Keep going, right there, go back down. Stop. See, it says A B C, A C E or something, A E C.
There it is. Yep, okay, Mike, I see it there.
The way I read it, Jake, is it's actually eight inches.
Yes.
Five inches between the brick and the metal. And then the metal's three inches thick, so a total of eight.
What if, what if we, uh, did something like this? What if you put town of Shoshone, but like we're right here, so it's not so close to the top, but it's right where the Shoshone is? So have it stretch out like how this is laid out here, but just have it just slightly above the camera, town of Shoshone. And then put the, uh, the logo directly below the camera. So it only obstructs, it's just this little spot right here. Everything else would have coverage.
So we're just.
So it's still gonna look, basically, you're just reversing this, uh, number three design.
So logo on the bottom.
Yeah, instead of, yeah.
Words on top.
There with the logo on the bottom instead of the top.
That's a lot of detail, yeah. There's a lot of detail on the seal, and, and so it makes sense to have that more readable by being lower.
Yeah, so you just have the town of Shoney right there and then have the logo just blow it. And just invert it. And then it wouldn't, the camera, you know, the, the lettering would be above the camera. And then the logo would only, so we'd only lose just that little spot right here, but we'd see anybody approaching it. But we'd still be able to see the door and the sides of the building.
We're giving away our, our dead spot.
Well, we have to go through the camera gift, so.
I like that myself.
That's just a thought, I'm just on that. It's not on the sign, but I'm sure we could have just convert those, that.
Yeah.
Number three. And just invert it. And then that would satisfy any issues with the cameras.
Wouldn't want it inverted because then the letters would.
Well, you know what I mean, Dan.
I know what you mean, but you're talking about engineers that don't know north from south.
That's why they're engineers.
Right, so you can't tell inverted.
I know, he had me all confused. I'm like, that's the north.
Put the round thing below the letters.
Yes, but the round thing below the letters, very simple.
I'm good with that, whatever you guys wanna do.
Me too.
So we do have a motion to accept the second one, is that?
It'd be the third, third rendering.
Well, we already had a motion.
We had a motion and seconded on the second.
Unless that motion were to happen to be withdrawn.
Or amended.
Motion.
I was drawn.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn. So can I get a motion for something on signage?
I make a motion to put together a combination of the three to fit our liking.
As discussed.
As discussed. With the logo below the lettering.
Seconded that one. How could you not go with that one? I'm, I'm going with that motion here.
It's moved and seconded that we, uh, go with option three, but with the, uh, town's logo below the lettering as opposed to above. Is there any further discussion on this?
I hate to bring up anything, but all this discussion, uh, that's pretty good. I just wanted to bring it up with the logo lookout of place. If it was put to the east of the town of Shoshone, closer to the road, what made me think that Mark said all the detail, make it closer to the road where they can see the detail? That's just a question. I just wanted a question. I just wanted to bring it up before we went any further.
You're gonna be driving by so fast, you're not gonna see it anyway.
Not if our police is doing their job.
It's still thirty miles an hour, perhaps, you can't see the.
It may not even look, but yet when Mark brought that up, I was thinking a detail closer to the road where they could see.
Are we on a timeline on this?
Uh, kinda. Yeah, we, they need the, our decision in order to get the process going. Cuz.
To the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, we're gonna use money from this year.
That's kinda what I.
Yeah.
I see what they're saying, if that logo was like to the left of the door. Same height as town of Shoshone.
That was my thoughts. I was wanting to bring it up, eight to two, but.
Yeah.
So what, ship thing all the way?
Put that, no, I said, like, put the logo all the way to the left.
So it's all unison in one line is.
Of the door and then right above the camera.
Weird though.
Town of Shoshone.
I, I'm.
I still like two, I still like two, but I don't really care, so let's just vote. Okay, there's been a motion and seconded that we do number three, but the logo below the camera as opposed to above.
I should move the whole thing.
But I think it's.
Be centered.
It won't be centered.
Yeah.
They sound like a bunch of women.
Can't they, can't they give us another rendering? I mean.
Well, that's why I was asking about our timeline crunch.
Yeah.
Well, sure, please, get the directions just to flip them.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that we're, alright, so the, is the motion to approve that or to move forward with that?
Number three with the logo below.
With the adjustment. We're moving forward, we could still change it. I think.
Was the original motion to move forward with adjustment of the the may have been used.
Correct. Number three, but with the logo below as opposed to above. The one that's on the screen, but with the logo below. Let's just do that.
Let's see, I'll make a motion.
I'm good with moving forward, yeah.
Moving and seconded. And we're in discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, moving backwards. Number thirteen permits. We have turned in and Mr. Mayor, I shot you a picture of it and, uh, Chief Kojai's pulling it up on the, uh, camera. I, I'm sorry, Councilman Nordin, I didn't have your number to send it to you.
I emailed it to Chris, so he could pull it up.
Yeah, so it's coming up here on the screen momentarily. And it is for the, uh, basically, it looks like it's the same thing except for. I guess there's no word. Where asks about it being a modular or any of that.
No.
We've gotta get some work done on this.
Yeah, we need, we do need, we should at some point update, but per the discussion, we all know that we're talking about the final product being a permanently affixed to, uh, proper foundation modular home, new construction. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
And I would entertain a second.
I'll second it.
Is that Mayor Highsmith?
Marshall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good move.
So question.
So, get the discussion.
Yeah, so Marshall, I have a question for you with that. Uh, the fact that it's not listed as a module on the forum, is there some, should they be added to the forum? So we can be clear that that's really what we're approving?
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
Be honest, it should be there.
If you feel it should be there, I mean, then you discuss it and you can ask to have it modified and however you, you, you want, but I mean, as long as the councils. It, it's up to the council to decide whether or not this meets the standards of what they believe the codes require. And that's, that's what you need to do.
For a modular home.
Yeah, for any kind of building, yes. Whether it's modular or whether it's a mobile home or even a stick built home that comes in, and that, that's your job as the council to decide whether there's enough information or not.
See, I would think on the top right, where it says use of building, home slash dwelling, we could put even a second slash and say modular.
Well, Mark, there's a place down on the lower left bottom that says, uh, one through five, and number two is type of construction, and I can always write in there modular.
I think that'd be fine. I think we need to have a list of modular. And so.
We will write modular in as it was, uh, presented to the council. And Kim's writing that as we speak, so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
There need.
And so, yeah. Yes, sorry. I don't mean to be keeping interrupting Jake, I'm sorry. Um, so the question timeline. So in our, in our code, in our ordinances, it's thirty days, is that correct?
Offer to skirt a trailer house.
Well, what? When we were talking about the timeframe and earlier, I was, we, I heard thirty days and that just doesn't make any sense.
No, skirting a trailer house, trailer house that hasn't been skirted yet, and we should, but there was no time, but there is for a trailer house. There's not for modular. But it's not gonna be skirted, it's gonna be.
Put on.
Attached to the foundation with proper fascia boards and things.
To a monolithic slab.
Yeah, to a monolithic slab or, or properly secured per manufacturer specifications with fascia board and all, but in ours, in our construction.
Foundation has a four foot wall. I don't think he's having a four foot wall. It would be a monolithic slab that it's gonna be attached to.
And then in the town, I did speak with, uh, Mr. Paraguay's about that, and it, it says, according to our code, it says, uh, what's the exact word? Uh, designed for use of the permanent foundation as a dwelling unit and connected to utilities, which is exactly what's gonna happen, and has been built in accordance with the, uh, the safety standards. Foundation for modular will be built per manufacturer recommendation. And we spoke about that, as long as the manufacturer is recommending that to be suitable, that would be within town ordinance. In my opinion.
I would suggest a sixty day timeframe, and then I can come back and we can extend that if we need to.
I think that's fair.
And if the, uh, unit is not.
It's being built and then he's setting it, so I mean, all he has to do is make.
And if it's not constructed and delivered within sixty days.
He just comes back in and gets a time stretch.
Been here, was that okay? Yeah.
What are we doing now?
We're, we're.
Giving you sixty, he's giving you sixty days to put it on foundation.
That's what Councilman Nordin is, uh, suggesting.
So what are we asked, what he's, I think he already's going with this, and you're gonna have the concrete poured in the building here in sixty days.
Be close. I mean, uh.
Let's say you're at day fifty-nine or sixty-two.
And, and what happens if all of a sudden they can't deliver?
Then you come back in. Doesn't change anything.
I mean, if they can't deliver it on time when they said they can.
You just ask for an extension.
Are we looking to put a timeline line on every building permit?
Yeah.
Mr. Paraguay. I mean, yeah, we do it to me, you gotta do it to everybody from here on out and.
Yeah.
I'm not prepared to start putting timelines on building permits myself.
Yeah, I see, and I would be. So that's where we'll disagree. I just, you know, cuz like Jordan was just laying out. I mean, if you don't meet the timeline, then at that point, come back in, oh, let's find out where the status is at. The idea is to get it done. You know, and to make sure that the town has the assurance that it's going to be done. And so if we have a timeline and then it's renewed, then that's, then you know, we know what's happening, and there's, it's communication between the builder and the town. And I think that's fair.
I mean, if we do it here, it's for every single building permit for perpetuity or whatever the word is.
And that's a bad thing? And that's a bad thing in this world.
It's been in on your.
You can't.
In your book, so you got to vote on it three times before you can do it to me. It's not, that's, it's not in our ordinances at this time. Maybe Al always thought the building permit should have an expiration date, but they don't. I mean, I'm going to try to do it as fast as I can. I mean, that that will. And make that promise. I want to get everything cleaned up and. I don't want to live in a big pen.
So can we take a building permit and add a? Just a thirty sixty day time limit on that?
On just this guy?
I know, I wanted to do it on everybody. Everybody, every project should have a time.
Well, that takes three votes. It takes three sets of meetings, ten days apart. Oh, I would address our attorney on that if that's a legal action. Yeah, I think you're gonna, I mean, you can ask for an update. Um, ask them to come in. And then, and at some point, if it's not being done, I think you could file. Make it a nuisance. If it's not complete. But I it's not in your ordinance as far as I can tell. And if you want to start imposing that, I think you're going to have to create it, create an ordinance.
So can we put out there, communicate progress in sixty days? Does that make everybody happy?
Yeah, I can come in. Mr. Perrois, or would you mind giving a product aggressive? Yeah, no, I won't bother me a bit to come in, tell you if you want me to come in every two weeks. I can do it.
Ah, we don't need that. No.
Any further discussion?
Is this like correct?
Go ahead, Mark.
I do think we need to have, you know, so communication in sixty days. I think that would be fine. And that should be added to the permit.
He did commit to doing that.
Yep, he did.
I just asked on the first building permit to this one, it's listed different with property owner. Is that changed? Or is that still the same? You just had your name. And now we have.
Oh, no, it was my mistake. First time both names should have been on there.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yo, you're good. I just was wondering if something changed if if you, you know, just trying. So I go.
Call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post.
Aye.
Pass. Okay, department heads, Mr. Quiver, sir.
One more question.
Oh, yes.
What will it take before I did permit and signed and?
Somebody will sign it tomorrow, probably. Councilman will say.
Okay. Yeah, Melissa will type it up and everything for you.
Okay, thank you, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was always going to say. Just sign that on bottom left.
Right there.
Yep, approved by. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Full Ten, Councilman. A report on the rehabilitation of the wellhouses. We're currently, as Stan's doing, so the. Prepack wellhouses are right. We expected them to arrive on June second, but that. Has been pushed to June nineteenth. There, there was, that was due to the production zones being delayed. To the prepack guy. And once we get to wellhouses delivered, the construction activities will resume again. The water tank access road involved modification card is about complete. The project is on summer break until. We have wellhouses. Four and five online and operational. Once we, once the wells are up and running, we can. Proceed with the sandblasting and recording them again. We are hoping to start this part of the project by September first. During this time, we will take the tank offline and use the pumps. To keep the distribution lines in town. Under pressure. All my years of running these water systems, I've never had to. Keep a system keep. Under pressure by using water pumps. I always had a second tank to rely on. Um, so. So this is going to be learned for. I I reached out to one of the water pushing guys. They are going to come and. They are going to set a time to when they can come and meet with me. They were in Las Vegas all last week, so. I'm not going back to their offices. So this this part of the project is still in the states. Few days in the way to figure it out. I will be sent the, while I'm right now, looking at all the. Pressure zones in town. And I want to put some. Pressure, pressure gauges of certain hydrants. Staff can monitor them. Now we'll have one set on. Far end down there by A Street on that hydrant or. Pressure relief valve. So with too much pressure, it will just shoot the water out. Out to the river. And that's, that's the only way I'm going to keep the lines from breaking. Other, I've talked with. Uh Brian, then. He said that, the teacher did that, but they struggled down there. Their main line valves. And if I do that. We've been having a few breaks over there by use well number five. Because they've had, they had breaks on the back part of their lines and they throw them down the bell. Close it a little bit. So they push it some water shoots, so it's still in the. But that, like I said, I'm still learning. I'm still trying to figure this out here. Those guys come meet with me when they sit down and. Try to figure it out. I tend to keep the tally in mind. It might mean I'm going to be shooting a lot of water out, pushing a lot of water. Try not to. There's a, there's a, we looked into getting a water bladder. Um, I'm still trying to figure out what size I really would. Would get get by with. Cause in. In September, we should be done. Running. A hundred and eighty thousand gallons a day. And now we're pushing that, must have pushed it up. Hundred fifty to hundred eighty thousand. But I would. The hundred thousand gallon water bladder is. Forty four thousand. Which I have sixty thousand in the force account, but. I don't know what kind of. Work's going to be. Needs to be done inside this tape. So I was looking at a fifty thousand. Gallon. See if that would work. Even if I do need it, no, I can just try to run all these pumps. But that, that fifty thousand one will be. Forty four thousand. That would be, so the. The LCI, the guys that are doing the tank, that did the tank. They would be. Um, there to help set it up. All of that and part of it. But again, that's. There's, I'm. There's some unforeseen that I don't. I'm working with everyone, so I don't. I don't know what. What's going, what that check looks like. Until. How much, how much is going to need fixing if it needs fixing? After the sandblaster, then we can. The engineer will go in, look at this. Met, see what. See how bad it's fit, see what needs to be fixed. If there's any holes, you know, that sort of thing.
Do they have a timeline on how long they thought that water tank?
Will be offline. Uh. They say three weeks. Depending on weather. But it could be longer months maybe. But TMS is giving me that timeline of three weeks. Just go in, clean it up, last it. Record it. That's. That's one of the things I got to do. Three weeks or just running on wells. Keeping the water, water in the town. I've spoken with the. The fire marshal. For fire protection. I just need to let him know when I'm doing this and he's going to mobilize everything to midville fire department. Use tanker trucks and everything. So that they have water there ready. Just in case.
Yeah.
We have a fire. I've got the fire protection, that's. Getting out there. But this, I'll be running on. Once I start to, we'll be only be running on one pump. Until I get well number four up that line. The one that shoots, struck its town. But we'll be running on just well number two. Oh, it's new, new well. I mean, right now it'll be going to the tank. But that's. Right now I got well number four hardwired. Because the VFD. Went, went out. And we, we tried. Uh rewired it to get it to work. Would not, quit. So just directly hardware. I mean, I, I just got it set up like that case I need. I haven't used it, but. It will come on and will. We'll send water to town. But once, once we get well, uh. Number five set. Set and they're going to start demo, demo on well four. This is all going to kind of take time. I mean, I'm hoping it. Somewhere in the middle of August, I got everything all going. But I, I want every, I want well four and five operational before I let them do well too. And. And if I had. Known all of this was going to happen, I could have gotten this, we could have been almost done with the tank by now. I could have done this in May. But TMS gave me a call too. They, they said they could be here in two weeks to do it. Like. No, I, I'm not ready for it because. I'm what, I'm work with, I, I don't have. Well, number four, I don't have a VFD on it, so. I can't. Just hurt. That, that will settle it down. With a VFD, I can settle it down. But that's, that's just coming up. Hope to, it's just get it through. And. Any questions over?
No, sir. What are you looking at to replace the VFD on the four?
They're about four thousand dollars. But. This is all going to. It's all going to be replaced once they do the rehab. There's all new VFDs coming in being set up. And. That, that. Let's put dynamics, does that? They're, they're, they're not going to be these little tiny things there. Very, very, it's a big. It's a big. Spinky pulp shop store, I think. They're putting in there, but. That's what they're going with now. But it will, all, all well, we have VFDs in them again. I do have them in there. This, this one, it gave up. I, I don't know who was, um, that. We haven't been a light yet, so I don't know. That's what caused it. It just, Mark just called me and said it was out, so I just told him, go ahead and turn the number two on. Run two, shut that one off and I'd have. Somebody come in, check it. But I, I checked the pump and everything. It was still good. I knew we still had a good pump. VFDs, it's gone, it's shot. And if we do get one, put it in there, it's going to. It's going to be for nothing and be a waste of work. Because it's still, we have totally here, I hope, before the end of this one. Okay. And Mike, I just want to know if you could work four tens? If we have any objections to that?
I think that's your call.
Yeah.
He was thinking of working four tens. Started a six three and putting it four three. We can do seven to five. He's going to be the only one. Me, Bart. Myself and Carlos. We'll still keep seeing hours. It's just something that he wants to do. Just for the summer.
He, he talked to me about it.
I like fourteen.
And he, he mentioned he's just trying to get his place done.
My, my opinion is you're the. Department head.
I, I don't.
And it. I have no heartburn as long as you're getting what you need to run your department.
Yeah, I got, I got three, three of us. So, most time.
Yeah, fine. As long as it, your hands are buttoned and it all works for you.
Yeah.
That's my take on it.
I'd like about.
What about?
Twelve, that's what I'd like to work.
You want him to work from seven to five?
Whatever you.
You're the department head, man.
Yeah.
If, if that.
He wants six thirty to four thirty.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, that, that's fair.
Okay. I'll let him do it.
Okay. You're the boss, so it's, it's working for you, do it. And if not.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with it. You know, like I told him, it's, it's going to be terrible. You're gone, it's going to be terrible.
He seems like a pretty good worker from that city. He, he used to work for me. I worked here, so. He, he's, he's a pretty good worker from what I know.
You're a good worker. Nice. Now that's all I have. Any more questions?
I guess I have one from our general budget of what did you, were you able to dig up on? Some of the pits.
Oh, the pit? Well, oh. To, to replace one pit, one. One service, the pits have ever seen that. I need. One thousand two hundred sixty one dollars eighty seven cents. It's one house.
And that's no.
Huh.
That's, that's with or without meter?
That's with meter. If that was a meter of the pit, the. The insulation. Uh disc. The cap. Reader, that's, that's everything.
Do, do we, I thought we were at four thousand.
No, this is just for one house.
Well, for some reason I thought we, I thought it was mentioned four thousand per meter pit or looks seven.
No, this is.
Okay.
This is what I got. The, the meter sells a hundred and seventy one dollars. The five eight by three quarter. The. The two, the two inch and the four inch. A little bit more expensive, but that's for the commercials. I, I do have a couple of two inches that is. Not pension, we're on. The. Airport. Cowboy State Pension quoted me at. Seven thousand nine hundred twenty dollars for. A half a mile, that's that. That's about how far it is from. From the gate to. Just right where. The mushroom farm. Up the ends. Right where the high line wires end. That's, that's where I bought, because if you go all the way to. The end to the, to that, that's a mile. But that, that other part, the other half is still up. But the only part is down is that first half mile. But that's. That includes him taking out everything, putting everything in. Picking the wire down and loading it up. It's, it's three dollars to put. That's for, that's pretty.
What about these guys outside of town?
Huh?
Are they cheaper?
That's a wide out bed.
How is that?
They're, they're, they're making buku money.
That's what they want to make the money on side.
Fencing ain't cheap.
I know. And that is Jay Swinfield. Hmm. That's Jay Swinfield.
No, what?
Cowboy fencing or whatever.
Yeah.
A Jay Swinfield.
Oh, yeah, Jason. Yeah, Jason Swinfield, yeah. I, I talked to him when. They had him doing some work on well number five. I mentioned it, he's. Hey, I do fencing on site.
Damn, that's, that's.
Yeah, clean up everything, fire it off. Get everything on. Those are good. You know. Well, thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Quiver. Um, no executive session. Reports for members of the council round table, Councilman Whitner, have you got anything? Councilwoman Hardik. I don't have anything. How about you, Councilman Ordine? I don't have anything, how about you, Councilman Nordean?
Nope, nothing tonight.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
This is Mark and I are down here, the WHAM convention, uh, should be. Pretty, pretty interesting, they got a lot going on. One of our citizens, Ken Kundles, down here for, to receive awards for a hero award from, from a hero award from WHAM. For all of the things he's done for the community for the last fifty-five years since he's been in Shoshone, so. That's pretty, that's pretty exciting, him and Deanna are down here, we talked about that, so we'll give you. Other than that, uh, everything else is. Kinda move, moving forward, nothing exciting.
All right. Uh, Sammy, uh, Councilwoman Hardik has moved to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, all in, any discussion? Oh, before we do that, I, is there audience questions, it's number nineteen, I didn't want to skip that. Okay, uh, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 I was, that was the delay, I'm certain that, uh, Mr. Mayor's not voting opposed, so. Approved.
Eight thirty.